Thank you, everybody. Thank you. It's now half past. Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. I'm councillor Glenn Dennis, Chair of the Housing, Neighbours and Leisure Committee. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's meeting, which will be available via the council website as a live stream through Teams with a recording for the meeting upload afterwards. First item on the agenda today is declarations of interest. Do I have any declarations of interest among members? Okay, I will also take the opportunity at this point to... I received an apology from councillor Singh. He's unable to attend today, so just register that for the minutes. Item two, minutes of the previous meeting. Are we all agreed that this is the fair record of the last meeting? Okay, I can sign this one off. Kedok. Minutes of other bodies. There was an item that... Is that... Is everyone agree that that's representative? Councillor Rowland, you are part of that committee, yes?
I am chair, yes, and that's reasonable, yes.
Thank you very much. We have no petitions and we have one question. Question one from councillor Cresswell to ask the Chair of Housing, Neighbours and Leisure Committee. Councillor Cresswell.
Thank you, Chair. We're all proud of Reading as a city of sanctuary. Can the committee be updated on the challenges faced in housing asylum seekers and refugees? Green councillors are concerned by reports suggesting that it is not uncommon to be granted refugee status and face immediate homelessness, with asylum protection measures falling away quicker than the welfare system steps up. While we still have a national government floating extreme right-wing policies such as British Homes for British People, what can Reading Borough Council do to ensure that the needs of asylum seekers and refugees are met?
Thank you, councillor Cresswell. I invite councillor Emerson, the Lead Councillor for Housing, to make the response on my behalf.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to councillor Cresswell for the question. As a council, we work closely with asylum seekers and refugees to support them in finding accommodation and to settle within our town. The team has a current caseload of 172 households. A very small proportion of those are what is called no recourse, i.e. those who have not formally applied for asylum or who have had their applications refused. The majority are accommodated by the Home Office in hotels until their applications are determined. If they receive a positive decision, the team works with them to find suitable and affordable accommodation. As a large number of the cohort are single and under 35, this is very challenging as they are priced out of many housing options and have no priority for social housing. The specific issue you mentioned has had a definite impact in recent months. As the number of asylum claims being agreed has increased since last summer as part of the government's backlog exercise, many asylum seekers are now being given one week's notice to leave their hotel accommodation after a positive decision. This is shorter than the previous period of 28 days, and it is not sufficient time for many to claim universal credit or find employment. As a result, they are increasingly at risk of homelessness as a result of being accepted to reside long... I will use Karen's, or councillor Rowland's rather. Thank you, Karen. Our statistics show that in the first six months of 2023, the average number of approaches from the group was eight. In the second half of the year, this rose to 29 per month. There was a far higher increase in the number within this group being placed in emergency accommodation. Only two such placements were made between January and June, but a total of 44 were necessary between July and December. A similar impact is seen in the figures for verified rough sleepers in the borough. This snapshot counts for the first six months of 2023, did not identify any individuals in this situation of losing home office accommodation after a positive decision. Over the following six months, 29 people were found to be street homeless for this reason. In this context of increased demand and uncertainty, the Housing Service works with each presenting family. Each applicant receives a personal housing plan and financial statement. Referrals are made based on their personal circumstances to charities and agencies that provide support with language, job searches, mental health problems, substance abuse issues and more. For those not entitled to accommodation from the council, the service seeks to link them to suitable accommodation. The service is also currently providing... It's currently working, sorry, with DWP and Launchpad, a local charity, to provide workshops and drop-in sessions on employment training and other pathways to fully participate in society. Most recently, a marketplace information event on the 8th of February this year in the civic centre attracted 230 visitors, given an opportunity for further links to be forged and for asylum seekers and refugees to be given information on health and wellbeing, befriending and education, as well as housing and employment. This is the highest attendance so far at one of these quarterly events and demonstrates our commitment to helping this group deal with the challenges they face. It should be noted finally that the team applies the relevant criteria to ensure those receiving assistance have a connection to Reading and those who have accommodation and support networks in place elsewhere will not be supported if they can return to another area. It goes without saying, however, that the Housing Service and its staff are always compassionate and will often liaise with the appropriate local authority. With regards to the government's proposed changes to social housing allocations, we have been notified of all of these, like other authorities, and will be submitting a response to the consultation before the deadline date of the 26th of March. I can share a copy of said response, should you wish. And as Lead Councillor, I shall say I do not support the right-wing rhetoric on housing and councillor Cresswell will recall the comments that are made at the last committee with colleagues on the awful comments made by Suella Braverman on those sleeping in tents being a lifestyle choice. I thank you for your interest in housing for refugees and asylum seekers.
Thank you, councillor Emerson. Councillor Cresswell, do you have a sec?
No, thanks for your comprehensive response. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Good. We'll move on. Item six, GLL report and presentation. Is this where I introduce GLL to the committee? Donna.
I will keep this very brief, just to give a short introduction to GLL's overall presentation and just to draw the committee's attention to the recommendations that are set out in the cover report. Notably, as well as noting GLL's presentation, the opening of the various facilities, including Palmer Park and Rivermead Leisure Centre, endorsing the priorities for 2425 as set out in paragraph 3.20 in the report, and also noting the receipt of the Sport England Strategic Facilities Fund grant of 1.5 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna, and thank you, Chair. We will go through... Yeah, so first introductions. My name's Craig Woodward. I'm partnership manager here in Reading and to... Sorry, Steph, come.
And I'm Steph Smith. I am the Healthy Community Manager for GLL in Reading.
Thanks, Steph. We're just going to go through our presentation here. First section will be myself and then second section will move to Health and Communities. Update from Steph as well, and then we're open to some questions at the end. A little bit of background on the GLL contract here in Reading. It's a 25-year contract which started in July 2021. For those of you who may have not been here last year when presented, it's the operation of the four leisure facilities in Reading. So that's Meadway, South Reading, Palmer Park and Rivermead. There's a part of the contract including obviously a new modern Rivermead as well as a new Palmer Park or extension to Palmer Park, which includes their new six-lane pool, gym and soft play as well. But we'll go through a bit more in detail of those later on. Across the 25-year contract, there is £40 million investment largely included into new buildings. There's also some additional bits as well, which again we'll touch on. Go to the next slide, please. So first up is Palmer Park. For those that haven't visited, Palmer Park opened on the 19th of December last year. Beg your pardon, year before last now. The facility is an extension of the old centre. So the old centre that was previously there, which opened in the 80s, the new area has been built and wraps around it. So it includes a new six-lane 25-metre pool. There's a gym, 100-station gym, which is above that. We also have a cafe and a children's soft play, which has proved to be extremely popular. We've, in addition, we've converted part of the old, what was the old gym into a studio as well. So it's got a fully functioning studio as well as Group Cycle Studios. Group Cycle is our version of Spin, along with some functional space and functional equipment as well. During the first 12 months, we saw over 3,000 visits to the new centre as well. It's proved to be extremely popular, very, very busy, and it is well on its way to achieving the goals that we all need. Next slide, please. In terms of Rivermead, again, we opened Rivermead Leisure Centre in July this year. So Rivermead, the new... Oh, sorry, I stepped too far away with the microphone, apologies. The new Rivermead was built opposite the old Rivermead, utilizing the huge car parking space we had there. So what we were able to do was actually build the new one whilst still operating the old one, which helped with continuity of service. The new facility has opened... So it opened July last year and it was open for the dry facilities only whilst retaining the demountable pool for the swimming element. And the new swimming pool will come online from the summer of this year as well, which is going to be extremely exciting, extremely exciting times. So what we do have at the moment is the new gyms, 120-station gym. There's three studios, which includes two main studios, along with the Group Cycle. Got a huge soft play there as well, which is again proved extremely popular, much like Palmer Park's, along with a cafe. What's to come in the summer is the eight-lane competition pool, eight-lane 25-metre competition pool, along with 250-seater viewing balcony. Also going to be putting in changing places, changing room as well. There's alongside the competition pool, there is a diving slash teaching pool. So diving slash teaching pool will be very... We have a movable floor, so it allows for children to be able to learn to swim, as well as going down to 3.8 metres, which obviously allows for the diving facilities. Diving is very much similar to what was at Central Pool previously. So it's two 1-metre springboards, a 3-metre springboard and a 5-metre platform as well. And we're also going to have a splash pad area there as well. So in terms of... I've had now six months, a little over six months' worth of opening at Rivermead and within them first six months, we saw over a quarter of a million visits as well. So again, fantastic, very similar to Palmer Park, really good progress so far. Next slide, please. Thank you very much. And as mentioned, it wasn't just about the two new centres that would be inbuilt. There's also refurbishment works that have gone on in both Meadway and South Reading and needs to continue what's happened previously as well. So Meadway had previously, last year reported, or yeah, last year we reported on the gym and health and fitness products that had been created, sorry, beg your pardon, improved. Over the last six to 12 months, we've also managed to do the wet side change rooms there as well. So the pool change rooms have been uplifted as well, which is again, it's proved really positive as well as improving the accessible change. We've also done some works in terms of the sports hall as well, just to uplift that space as well in terms of both the flooring and just the general decoration. With regards to South Reading, South Reading again, last year we had very similar in terms of the health and fitness product that was improved. But at the moment, we're going through some swimming pool refurbishment works as well. So the swimming pool, pool tank is being refurbished, which will help give the shelf life and secure that facility for the long term. As well as alongside doing this, we are refurbishing the change rooms as well. So again, very similar to Meadway, all of the wet side swimming pool change rooms will be fully refurbished across the four centres now. Similar again... Oh, thanks very much. Just go through... No, that's okay. Thank you. Just to go through some usage stats, these are very much the headline stats. There's obviously more information in the report that went out as well, just in detail. But the headline stats are that we are very much in, you know, ahead of where we were where we were pre-COVID levels, gone past them. 2023 saw us get over 9,000 visits. With 2024, definitely the target to go past that 1 million visits for the year. We had over 6,000 free swims across all four pools as well, which has been a bit of a difficult challenge because we had a couple of closures and bits in peace as well, as you saw on the previous slide. So offered over 6,000 free swims, which is very much a continuation of the Your Reading Passport scheme for the Reading residents. In terms of prepaid memberships, prepaid memberships are our direct debit upfront cost paid members. They are just short of the 7,000 mark. It's a shame we couldn't make up that additional 11 to hit the 7,000, but never mind. So yeah, just short of the 7,000 mark, which has been really, really positive and is slightly ahead of where we were hoping to be for this stage of the contract as well with the new centres opening. Pleased to say that in 2024 as well, we've had extremely positive figures coming in as well. So that figure when we report next year should far exceed that as well. And pay and play memberships, so pay and play memberships are our resident cards. So these are where we offer local resident, or Reading residents, a free access, a free card to allow for discounted access into the facilities. So they are just short of 3,000. Again, we're getting so close to milestone figures, but just missed that one as well. So very close to the 3,000 mark there as well. What those memberships allow is for discounted breaks when people come in to use the facilities for the Reading residents. So it's up to 30% for a general use and any concessions up to 50% reductions on the prices as well. And yeah, that's, as I mentioned, that's all been done with sort of the disruptions of two new centres opening, which have been quite challenging, along with the refurbishment works at both Meadway and South Reading. So moving into the new year, it'd be nice to have the sort of, hopefully no disruptions like that and actually continue to grow and have more people coming in using the facilities. Next slide, please. Thank you. A little bit of a touch on the people side. So this is more around our staff and our colleagues that work with us. So GLL continue to hold real living wage accreditation, something that's extremely important to GLL and something that we strongly believe in. So rather than paying, we, rather than paying a national living wage, we actually go above and pay the real living wage. In terms of bit staff training on the next few points here. So we've had 27 new starters in terms of NPLQ. So that's the National Pool Lifeguard Qualification. So these are the qualifications that are needed for people to lifeguard our pools and make sure that we're operating our pools safely. So 27 complete those through the training we've put on. Of course, had 14 new swim teachers as well. So these, again, all of these just mean that we can offer more and try and improve the service. So whether that's extending our pool timetable or putting on more swim lessons or something like that, these are the bits that are absolutely critical. We've tried to do this in hours, but this was quite difficult. We've had over 650 e-learning modules. So a lot of what we do is very much trying to sort of improve and encourage the workforce to continue to grow and learn and develop. And we've had over 650 e-learning modules completed in the last 12 months, which was probably just as challenging trying to add all of that up, if I'm honest. So that was, yeah, but it's good because it shows that people are continuously trying to develop. We've continued with reward and recognition system as well, which is again, very important to us. We've had seven apprentices start in 2023 and the plan is for three additional ones throughout this year. There is an advert out for one at the moment at Palmer Park, but it's very much supporting the apprenticeships and getting apprentices and getting sort of young people or people into work through the apprenticeship schemes. The way our apprenticeship scheme works is that we offer team leaders, sorry, team member apprenticeships and we offer the four main qualifications that we need to become a well-rounded member of staff. So that is the Lifeguard Qualifications, National Pool Lifeguard Qualification I mentioned earlier, along with the Swim Teacher Qualification I mentioned, this First Aid at Work and also Fitness Instructor. So what this does, it actually allows a member of staff to be fully multi-skilled within the centres and it means they can have a bit of variety in their roles too. We've supported 22 work experience placements in the last 12 months as well and also got 18 booked in already for this year as well, so that continues to move forward. Workforce is made up of 203 members with over 85, a little over 85% of them being Reading residents as well. Those that aren't do live just outside of borough boundary, so we are very, is very much a local team. And one thing that's just happened recently, that we just recently announced, is GLL have just been awarded the Investors in People Gold Award. GLL previously held the Silver Award for five or six years. It was our 30th year last year and we were quite keen to try and push ourselves as far as possible and we achieved the Gold Award. One thing that was quite important with that and from a local point of view is actually Reading was one of the local partnerships that was assessed. So we had the assessors come in and we were one of the 10 to 12 that were actually selected. So it's really great in terms of, you know, it's very much on a local level, that one as well. So yeah, I think I'm quite pleased with from a personal perspective. Next slide, please. And I think this is the last slide for me before I hand over to Steph. A little bit about energy and environment. So two new centres that were built were built to bring excellence, which again, Palmer Park has achieved and Rivermead's well on track for as well. So we'll find that out once everything's finished there. There was 1.6 million investment in total, which was around poolside climate control, sports hall climate controls, pool covers for heat retention, there's heat recovery systems, energy-efficient lighting. Last year, there was also the decision to put in a further £1 million worth of investment in terms of supporting with carbon reduction, which was the inclusion of both the air source heat pumps and the solar panels. For those that have not seen any images of Rivermead's roof, we've got two huge air source heat pumps on the roof and 770 solar panels there as well, which again is fantastic for sort of improving our carbon footprint and reduce carbon reduction as well. We've also recently, apologies, it's very, very slightly out there because we've actually heard back now, but we submitted application for the Swimming Pool Support Fund through Sport England and were successful at Meadway. So we've got some money that's come through from Meadway to be able to do some improvement works in terms of carbon reduction there as well, which will be coming through quite soon. Yeah, but that's everything for me. So next slide, now hand over to Steph. Thank you very much.
Right, hopefully you can all hear me. So yes, over to me to talk about Healthwise. So for those of you that don't know, Healthwise is our specific health programme and this supports individuals to manage health conditions, to help them lose weight and to reduce their risk factors of having a chronic health condition or long-term health condition. So this is a referral scheme and it is for Reading residents. So that is anyone who lives, work, who lives or works in Reading and for anyone who is registered with a GP in Reading as well. Worth noting that although it's a referral scheme, we do have the option for self-referral into one of our pathways, which is adult weight management, which I'll come on to in the next few slides. You can kind of see there, it's a little bit cut out, but common reasons for referral into our Healthwise programme are things like high blood pressure, diabetes, circulatory and respiratory diseases, depression and anxiety and related mental health conditions and weight management. So in 2023, the three pathways that we had running were our physical activity referral scheme, which is also known as GP referral, Phase Four cardiac rehab, which follows on from Phase Three cardiac rehab, which takes place in the Royal Berkshire Hospital, and our Tier Two Adult Weight Management Programme. All three of those pathways are 12 weeks long. Starts off with that referral, referral is triage screened, initial contact made and then someone comes into the centre for their initial assessment, where they then receive a tailored programme of support or enrol into one of the weight management courses. And then our Healthwise team check in with them at a minimum of two for eight and 12 weeks. At the end of the 12 weeks, an individual can graduate off of the Healthwise programme and then they can then stay on a Healthwise membership for up to two years, but they progress into the maintenance or mainstream classes. Next slide, please. So looking at the Healthwise referral numbers that we had in 2023, the scheme was hugely popular, so we had a total of 619 referrals into the scheme. That is approximately 52 a month, so the team have been very busy, plus an additional 32 referrals which were rejected. Now, the reason that we reject referrals is either an individual is too early in their diagnosis, so sometimes it's not actually suitable for them to be participating in physical activity or the individual doesn't meet the criteria, so we have to reject them. 77% of the referrals that we received came in from GPs in Reading. As noted, other referral sources are physiotherapists, Royal Berkshire Hospital, et cetera. And I previously mentioned the self-referral portal for adult weight management, which you can see was our second most popular pathway. Now, the self-referral portal was actually responsible for 45% of the adult weight management referrals that we received last year. So this is a really good indication that actually when that is an option, individuals are willing to refer themselves and arguably as well when we've got individuals who are making that self-referral, they are further along on their readiness to change journey, which is really positive for us to work with as well. When we look at demographics of who we sort of see in the Healthwise service and who's being referred in, 64% of our referrals come from those of working age, so 34 to 64 years old. 69% of our referrals are for females, which is quite common for health schemes to see a higher percentage of females accessing them compared to males. And the ethnicity of those accessing the service is reflective of the borough. So white British is our most represented ethnic group, followed by Asian, Asian British and Asian Welsh. Next slide, please. When we look at the outputs or the outcomes that we've had from the Healthwise service, PAS and cardiac, so that's the Physical Activity GP Referral Scheme, and our cardiac scheme, we grouped them together. We've had a more than 50% completion rate, which is really positive. And even more positive is the majority of those completers are now taking part in 150 minutes or more of physical activity per week. So that's a measure that we use from the Chief Medical Officer Guidelines. You can see there that 36% of our completers lost more than 3% body fat. Probably worth noting that losing body fat isn't necessarily always the main aim of the Physical Activity Referral Scheme or the Cardiac Programme, but it is a good indicator of how successful the scheme is. As often obesity or excess weight is a comorbidity for those who are being referred with other health conditions, type 2 diabetes, for example. And you can also see that we've had a good percentage of self-reported improvement in overall health, which is really positive to see. When we look at our adult weight management courses, we delivered 10 courses in 2023 and we introduced evening courses to reduce barriers for those. As I previously mentioned, we predominantly have 34 to 64-year-olds. For those in employment, we've had evening courses added. We've had a 65% completion rate, which is really good. So when you look at the Office for Health Improvement and Disparity, they report that the average completion rate for a Tier Two Adult Weight Management Programme in England is actually 38%, so our programme is proving to be very successful. And even better news is that 83% of completers are losing more than 3% body fat, which is obviously the aim of adult weight management. And then a really nice positive, 93% of completers are reporting an improvement in overall health. Next slide, please, Simon. So just some more facts on Healthwise. So we, in 2023, we've had our full team come on board, so we now have a coordinator and two facilitators and we've been upskilling that team to enable us to expand our Healthwise provision. We've delivered training such as make every contact count and also upskilled them to do other pathways, which I'll come on to in next steps. We have completed some outreach work with GP surgeries and the Royal Berkshire Hospital. So for those of you that noted that cardiac referrals were slightly lower than we would like, we've been visiting the Royal Berkshire Hospital every other week to rebuild that pathway and boost those referrals. And we've also worked quite closely with social prescribers as well. We've supported all of Public Health England's health promotions. So there's a different health promotion every month. Predominantly, these go up in centres, but occasionally we have events as well. So we've done some stuff around stop smoking and wider promotions. We've held seven health MOT events, so these are like health checks. They're non-invasive, it's a height, weight, blood pressure and a healthy conversation using the previously mentioned MECC training. So we delivered seven specific events. We didn't find that they were very well attended and we're now actually moving to a model where we are providing health MOTs at community events, which I'll come on to. And also we've upskilled our fitness instructors to be able to complete these on requests from members as we think that's more efficient use of time, especially given how busy the Healthwise team are. We've also had some co-located health programmes, which is really, really positive. So we've had Solutions for Health delivering smoking cessation. We've had the National Diabetes Prevention Programme being delivered across all four centres. So that's an organisation called Live Well, Take Control. And we've also got the Royal Berkshire Hospital pulmonary rehab in at Palmer Park delivering their programmes. And the real advantage to having these co-located programmes is that we have a direct link with the individual so that when their programme comes to an end, they can be referred into our Healthwise programme and suddenly the leisure centre isn't as daunting as it may have been at 1.4. they can be referred into our Healthwise programme and suddenly the leisure centre isn't as daunting as it may have been at 1.4 them. The final thing we've got within our Healthwise offer is our dementia supervised gym over at South Reading Leisure Centre. Um this is something that we started, I think it was February last year. Um and it got off to a good start and then sadly we have seen it tail off slightly. Um so it's something we're looking at reviewing and we're talking to Age UK and dementia friendly Reading Steering Group to work out what the actual best offer is there. So watch that space. Next slide please, Simon. So the other part of um my role is community. So community is a huge part of what GLL do. Um it's how we influence and how we create change within the communities we work in. Um one of the, I'm just going to do sort of a whistle stop tour of all the community um things that have happened over the last year. So one of the really positive things that we've had is the refugee membership. So this is a free six month membership that anyone with um refugee status can apply for. Um and we've had 86 of those taken out across Reading in 2023. Um we also saw the introduction of the community memberships. So this is a discounted rate for um key workers and council workers, so NHS, army, police, et cetera. And those have been well received as well. Um Craig slightly stole my thunder. I was going to tell you about the residence card and the concessions card, but you you now know about them. So we've continued to promote them and they've they've been really well received. Worth highlighting on the concessionary card that that is also available to asylum seekers. So that has proved quite popular when we've had conversations with um organisations such as Together UK. Um also in 2023, we saw the growth of GLL Sport Foundation. So for those of you that don't know, this is our um talented athlete scheme where we provide different levels of sport depending on um the level that an athlete is performing at. In 2022, I can't remember the exact number, but this was in single figures. Um and then last year this went up to 28. So we supported 28 local athletes. Um don't want to do a plot spoiler, but it's it's continued to grow for this year, which is really positive as well, but you have to come back next year for that bit. Um we've also seen the introduction of um inclusive swimming and send soft play sessions at Palmer Park. So the inclusive swimming, we allow for extended time for changing. We have the pool pod there, which um the lifeguards can operate. Um and we also have in the send soft play, we turn the music down and we limit the numbers. You have an additional adult go for free. So they're all things that we've worked with community groups to take feedback on what they should look like um and put those sessions on. Won't touch on the work experience as Craig's talked about that. Um but we've also worked really hard to create local partnerships with organisations and clubs. So just a few um examples, we've had um a partnership with Compass Recovery College where we've delivered yoga and pilates for mental health. Compass Recovery College have provided a recovery worker, we've provided the instructor and it's been a really good joint venture. Um we've also delivered wheelchair sports with Bencap, we've had racket sessions with young people with dementia. And we're continuing to sort of do some training as well with organisations such as Berkshire Vision to help our staff learn how best to um support those wanting to use the gym but are visually impaired. Next live please, Simon. So we've also had some really good um celebration events and awareness days. So standout events of 2023, we had the Palmer Park Festival of Inclusivity. So this is a a local group called Sport Together. Um they delivered this this day of inclusive um sports ranging from athletics to football. We had cricket. Um there was lots going on out there and and GLL really got behind and supported that and and we helped in the organisation of it and it's coming back this year. Um last year we had around 80 people attend. We're expecting similar numbers this year in April again. Um we also had Reading's Children's Festival, which we took part in. We got our staff and customers involved in things like Easter egg collections and Christmas gift appeals for the Royal Berkshire Hospital. So just strengthening those relationships and showing that actually GLL are here and we are part of the local Reading community now, which is really positive. Um we have created an offline manual. So this is something that is available at libraries and through social prescribers. So GLL, a lot of our information is web based. Um and something that social prescribers flagged was that this can cause barriers. So we've worked hard to to overcome them. We've also had the provision of warm spaces at Meadway Sports Centre where we provide um free hot drinks, showers, charging for portable devices, et cetera. Um we've got that happening two days a week, two hours on a Wednesday, two hours on a Thursday. The Wednesday session has board games and the Thursday session is more targeted for young families with soft play. Um that is running until March. We've introduced a programmable gym space at Palmer Park where so far the focus has been on female only sessions. So there's a large Muslim community around Palmer Park and this has been really well received. So we did a launch day for female only gym hours. Um and we had over 120 women attend. Um we've also introduced female only swimming lessons, swimming and football activities as well. Um so just another example of how we're working with with the community groups that we've got. Senior activities have been developed at Meadway and Rivermead. Um with a real thriving programme at Rivermead. Um and at Meadway, we've introduced some social sessions, some taster activities. And we also hosted a badminton tournament against a GLL centre in um Oxfordshire against White Horse where Reading were victorious. So thought I'd throw that one in there. Should have done a shout out to the winning team. I can't actually remember their team. I think their team name was something like. Oh no, I don't know what it was. I don't know what it was. Um we've also had swimming for a pound during school holidays. So this is kind of like a kids for a quid initiative that happens across GLL. Um it isn't hugely known about, so we're going to work to promote that a bit more this year. Um but it is popular with those who are accessing it, which is really good. Um next slide please, Simon. And this is my final slide. So across um health and community, we have a annual social impact plan, which basically outlines everything that we're aiming to do over the next year. Um from a health point of view, this includes the introduction of new pathways. So in Reading, we are looking to expand our cardiac rehab programme. So currently it's available at Rivermead. Um and we will be bringing this over to Palmer Park in the near future. Um we're introducing falls prevention. We're also introducing aquatics for health, which will be a really nice offer. Um and we're also going to be introducing cardiac rehab, but our facilitators are just going through the training to be able to deliver that one. So that will be towards the end of this year. Um in terms of sort of community based initiatives, we've got the Reading Football Club Community Trust have moved into South Reading Leisure Centre on Monday of this week. Um and they deliver their social inclusion initiatives. So they have the Reading Alternative Provision um for those who struggle in school. They also have um a send education and a targeted kicks programme to to sort of reduce offending behaviour. So that comes with a really nice opportunity for us to explore ways in which we can work together. Obviously, they are predominantly football based. Um so we'll be looking to work with them and see how we can engage the local community. Um we're already reviewing our senior programme at at South Reading, so we're going to be um releasing that, I think, from next week, which is exciting. And then finally, we are continuing with our open days and events. So just, I guess, a plea to look out for them and please do help us share because we are doing some work and we want everyone to benefit from it.
I think just thank everyone for your time. Um and then obviously to open up to questions. Love to teach.
Thank you very much, members of GLL team. Uh very informative and busy presentation. I'm very impressed with some of the things that uh that you've been doing. Um so we'll just open up for questions. I'll bring in our lead councillor for leisure, Adele.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that presentation. I think you've really summed up the shared values that Reading Borough Council and GLL have around our leisure offer in the town and it and the scale of it that you're supporting. We're supporting elite athletes, there's Olympic stars of the future, but also right down to people who don't have the confidence to go to a leisure centre, who've got health issues. And that was really important to Reading Borough Council. And when we were developing this contract and going through the procurement process, these are facilities for everyone. And I'm very proud that at a time when councils across the country are struggling, we are still investing in that and you are working with us to deliver. And I want to pay testament to yourselves and also to our contract management team at Reading Borough Council, because I think you've you've developed a really strong, a robust professional relationship. And we're seeing the dividends of that. Uh the the dividends? Yeah, that kind of works, doesn't it? Kind of works. Seeing the results of that, I think, was where I was going for. And the creativity and the adaptation, there is space within the contract to for it to evolve and develop. And we've seen that. Of course, the big example of that is when we had the problems with the Environment Agency licence that we needed for the pools. Um we were not deterred. There was some creative problem solving and we've perhaps done the only ever part opening of a leisure centre. I don't know, I've not checked. But that's fantastic because, you know, people could have thrown up their hands and we could still be using old Rivermead now. And we could have a beautiful new leisure centre that nobody could get into uh as at the time of speaking, but nobody thought that was good enough for Reading. And I'm really, really proud of the way everyone worked together, got that open. People are loving the new Rivermead. I recently visited the pool hall. It's spectacular. I'm so excited about getting people in there and progress is good. And it won't be long before kids are going for the quid and they can go into that. But it's going to be brilliant. So thank you so much. But I really want to make sure that everyone in the room understands the hard work by individuals and the code, the partnership working that ha is delivering this. It's a fantastic programme. I'm very, very proud and I'm very proud of those of you who are delivering it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barnett Ward. Councillor O'Connell.
Thank you. Um I agree with everything my fellow councillor said. Um I as a local teacher, particularly in a secondary school, I'm really, really pleased to see the apprenticeships and the work experience. It's so difficult to find companies that, you know, will take on uh young people for the work experience. And the fact that you're doing over 20 in the last year, that's just brilliant. Um and with the apprenticeships, the qualifications are so important, you know, they're not just getting trained in work. And, you know, in the bad old days, you were made to do the sort of like cruddy jobs that no one really wanted to do. And this just doesn't sound like that at all. They're coming out with qualifications in different areas. Sounds really, really good. Um as a Tarhurst ward councillor, I got very excited at the carbon reductions at the Meadway and will be very interested when more emerges on that. Um I'm a teacher of geography and we do a case study um on sustainable cities. And if Reading keep going at this rate, we'll have to switch out our current case study for Reading. So thanks and keep it up.
Thank you, councillor O'Connell. Um councillor Maskell, virtually.
Do you mean Haka?
Oh, sorry.
Been a while.
Sorry.
That's all right. Um I've I've this is a funny anecdote. I was looking at my own university sweatshirt and was devastated not to see my name and I remembered my name at that point was Maskell. So yeah, it does get confusing. Um uh yeah, so I just want to apologize for not being there in person. I lost a dear friend today. Um my sort of, I like to give my thanks first of all to the team that delivered Rivermead. It's my local sports centre and it's the one I go to very often. Um oh gosh, those have been on this committee for a long time, remember. Questions go coming forwards and backwards towards this committee, many times mentioning the car park. So I cannot express how excited I was to see the new car park that was so level and raised. So we might have those drainage issues that we did last time. And I'm really delighted to see the social prescribing that's happening. It's something I'm I'm very passionate about personally. Um obviously doctors have their place in prescribing medication, but there's an awful lot to be said for prescribing exercise for wellbeing mentally and physically um outside of obviously the your traditional prescription. So I'm really pleased to see that. I just have, um I'm sure many people in the in the public will be wondering this is, um at the moment, the demountable tools pool's doing a great job. Um and we've got lovely new lighting to it and we've got a really nice pathway. So my first question is, um what are the plans for the demountable pool once the the Rivermead pool has been fully opened in the summer? And and secondly, I just wondered if I sometimes walk to Rivermead and cross the the drainage ditch. If there were any plans to sort of improve the the sort of the the, not necessarily the nature, I don't know how much you can do with that because it is drainage. But just improve the the look and general feeling for that particular part of um the entrance into Rivermead. Because sort of once you get these sort of pretty grotty and dark, um and obviously that is a strange entrance into such a beautiful leisure centre.
Thank you, councillor Haka. I'll pass that question on to the GLL team.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Haka. Um sorry to hear of your loss as well, um if I'm able to say so. Um I'll go for the Rivermead um ditch question first, if that's okay. Um so we, um there is another word for it and I'm racking my brains to think what it's called. I'm so sorry. And we we have done some work, um works on there over the past of 12 to 18 months where we've had to to dredge and pull everything back as well. Um I think my understanding of, and and I may have this slightly wrong, but unfortunately what that then does is although it it allows for access through the the waters passed through, it effectively then has everything regrown, which is where it's got to the situation now where it does look a little bit um unkept. That is actually done through the the dredging, unfortunately. So yeah, we'll re-review those. And there is works to be upgraded on the and works for the lighting to be upgraded, which will help there as well. And I think there's possibly a little bit more to do on the frontage as well. It looks like some of the trees have sprouted branch um bits out of the ground as well. So I think there's a little bit that just needs a bit tidying up, but we'll work with um with with colleagues through RBC as well for that. In in terms of the amount of pool, um at the moment, the the plan is for it is um to be continued as a as a pool um at the moment. But yeah, that's that's where it is. Um so yeah, once the once the pool opens, that will be an an offshoot of the the swimming pool, which we may be looking at at sort of clubs in groups like that. But yeah, thank you very much for your question.
Thank you and thanks for your condolences. Thank you.
Thank you. Um councillor Goss.
Thank you, Chair. Uh both my hometown of Belfast and since I've made a new home for myself down here, I have yet to encounter a leisure centre facility that has not been improved by uh GLL taking it over and investing in it. So I commend you for that. And I was very impressed by the report you gave in terms of your community engagement this evening. So that that is just wonderful. So um no question, just well done and please keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Goss. Um councillor Kitchenham.
Hello. Um I just wanted to mention Christchurch Meadow paddling pool and how pleased I am to see that it's been so well looked after. Because I remember my own children enjoying it and it was it was absolutely a source of joy to see it being enjoyed by a new generation this summer.
Thank you, councillor Kitchenham. Councillor Rowland.
Thank you. Um I just wanted to say wow. I I mean, I I'm so impressed just listening to all of the good things that this has brought forward. I guess it really kind of, it kind of blew my mind, uh really. Uh I just, I guess my 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 little brain just didn't imagine how big and how many things you could get involved in. So I I was really honestly, genuinely and surprisingly blown away. Uh the, I mean, the 52 persons a month that you get in referrals, I that that must, that's a full time job in and of itself. And the success rates rates that you were quoting were just, were also really, really impressive. I was also uh really impressed too with the fact that you're offering a six month membership to refugees. I'm, I I was kind of curious about what the take up is on that because I think that's really great and it really shows Reading Borough Council delivering on all of our priorities. And and, you know, to the earlier question too that councillor Crestwell raised. I mean, I think that's, you know, I I I was really, I was really pleased to hear that. And I just wanted to kind of know about the take up and how they get out with that. Finally, the one question that I do have is you said, um Steph, at the end, you you said something about like, well, we want, you know, please help us share this. And and so I guess my only question is, what are we doing about media to get this out more and more? I mean, I don't see, maybe I shouldn't expect to see leaflets coming through my door, anything like that. I mean, I'm, I speak from someone at the extent of my exercises, walking back and forth from the house and using my uh my thumbs on my phones. So how do I, you know, how do I find out more about it? And what what are the plans, I guess, for the media on that? So just overall, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rowland. Councillor Iub.
Thank you, Chair. Uh just want to ask, uh thank you for coming in, giving the presentation. Uh just want to ask the regarding the swimming, uh there used to be a provision for our elderly, yeah, like a free swim. Has that been taken away? And second question is, you, you know, with our residents elderly in Reading and with disabilities as well. Is is there some provisions made for, you know, where like a certain afternoon, they can come in and just the elderly can they can come in and just the elderly can have a bit of a swim, the more fit of us joining in and try and go past them?
Thank you very much. The answer is yes, it's still there. For the quick and easy answer, we've got, so we've still on our new Reading passports, and we took on from the exciting contracts for July 21, which obviously access for those that were on the sort of historical legacy membership, they're still in place and still do offer that free swim element. In terms of anybody new joining, what we do is we offer the discounted rates, so the 50% discounted rates for those that are Reading residents. For anybody with, we do have an inclusive membership as well, which is a heavily discounted membership, which allows a prepaid one. So, that's more for people that come in probably more than once a week, really, sort of looking at it twice a week or more. That is reduced down to £25 and accesses all the facilities, which is a heavily reduced membership compared to the normal 42. The other part of the question, I believe, was more dedicated sessions. So, depending on what activity is, but yes is the answer. We do have some SEN sessions that are available for soft play, for swimming, and also we've got the gym at Palmer Park as well. So, the programmable gym at Palmer Park actually offers a quiet space for people to be able to go into. So, it's not the only offer we have. You can use a gym at any of the facilities, they all are accessible. But for those that wish to have a quieter space, we do have programmable sessions at Palmer Park as well. So, hopefully that answers the question.
Thank you, councillor Iob. Thank you, GLL team. Are there any more questions? Donna, did you want to summarise or anything?
If I could just pick up on some councillor Rowland's questions, so around communications. So, GLL have very strong social media presence, so on Facebook and X. We, as the council, also support them with that, so we do a number of joint press releases. I certainly know when we opened Palmer Park, we leafleted around the vicinity as well to make people aware. We advertise on the digital advertising screens as well, all around the town. Once we start getting ready for the new pools at Rivermead to open, you'll see another refresh of that as well. So, I think clearly there's lots we could do more of, but with the resources that we've got, that's what we're doing. I just wonder if GLL colleagues are able to pick up on the refugee membership take-up?
Yeah, of course. So, in terms of the refugee memberships, we had 86 taken out in 2023, so a reasonable number. It lasts for six months, and what we actually find is most individuals are sort of either moving out of the area, or they are accessing a different type of membership. Perhaps they're going into a more, sort of a different offer. So, for example, we had refugee football. So, for those that were interested in football, they've been moving into that, which is really good. Asylum seekers unfortunately can't access that membership. So, that's where we have the concessionary card, and that's what we've been working with organisations like Together UK to try and promote the usage of that. And we're also working with them to try and get some funded memberships, some funded sessions as well. So, it's very much on our radar to increase our provision for that. But, yeah, the refugee membership is a GLL nationwide thing, and we promote it in Reading.
I don't see any other indications as to ask some questions, so I will move on the agenda. I thank our members of GLL very much for their presentation, and good luck for the future. Thank you. Okay, we move swiftly on to item seven, highway maintenance update. I believe Sam is going to... Oh. Thank you. You don't have to run. You don't have to.
I do apologise. Right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Sam Sheen, Highways and Traffic Services Manager, and I do apologise for that slight misunderstanding. Right, this is the highway maintenance programme for 2425, and how we got on during last financial year, 2324, for the capital highway maintenance programme. So, this is the annual report I bring to committee, and it's to provide an update of how we're going to propose to commit the valuable capital funding that we have secured for the next financial year, 2425, starting in April. This year, the funding has been secured through the Department of Transport, local transport plans, bridges and carriage rate grant award, that's 1.838 million, as well as the council's year three or five-year capital funding for residential road improvement, eight million, and that four million for bridges. Plus, of course, there's additional funding we've got from the government, from the Department of Transport, for reallocation of funding from the HS2 North Highspeed Rail project that has been changed, which we have secured 7.62 million over 11-year financial year period, including the current financial year as the first one part of that. This additional DFT funding is broken down into 236,000 for this existing financial year, which we've added to our capital programme for road resurfacing, 236,000 for next financial year, 2425, which we've also added to the resurfacing programme, plus the remaining 7.262 million, which is spent over the next 10 financial years. A requirement is for us to develop a plan for committing this funding, and also to report back every three months on how we are spending it. So, we'll do a quarterly report on how that's been funded. Just to note that this HS2 DFT grant funding is actually additional money to what we've got already, and it is additional to the base rate for the local transport plan for bridges and carriageways. We are entering into the final year of the known three-year DFT settlement next financial year, and we know that to be 1.838 million. That's made up of 800, just about 800,000 pound of base grant, 800,000, just about 800,000 for pothole grants, and about 230,000 for incentive funding. What we don't know is what our base rate will be from 2526 at this point in time. So, the proposal we're making initially is that we will only commit 10% of the 7.26 million in the next financial year, and we will come up with a plan of how we will commit the remaining funds once we know what our base rate will be going forward, 2425. But that could be probably this time next year, because we don't know how they're going to be allocating that. So, yes, it's very good news, it's great to have the additional funding, but it's not 100% certain whether it's addition every single year for the next 10 years. And also, this report provides progress on the 2324, that's the current financial year capital delivery, and this also serves as our grant determination that we need to go back to the DFT with, and that's our section one fab officer would sign a statement saying how we spent that money. This serves that purpose. The council has continued to deliver an extensive highway works programme during the past financial year, with major road, carriageway resurfacing, specialist concrete road resurfacing, minor road, micro asphalt resurfacing, rhino preservation resurfacing, footwear resurfacing, street lighting LED replacement, as well as bridge and structural maintenance programmes. There's continued investment from the council, along with HS2 grant, will continue to help us improve our highway assets and further reduce potholes complaints, reduce our risk, and allow the council to use lower carbon alternatives to externalise life of a public highways going forward. And I would ask that the committee approve the recommendations set out in section two of this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Adele did indicate.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to thank Sam Sheen and the team for their incredible work that has been evidenced here over the things that were done previously and for the upcoming year. I know I've never mentioned it before, but there is a reason why they achieved best service team last year at the MJ Awards. It's a fact that we all deserve to be proud of, and it's for a team that has worked very, very well with the money that this Labour Council knew to invest off of the request of our residents to have better roads, have improved roads and pavements, and to ensure that that was all fit for purpose. It has been a real joy to see the motivation of a team like this, when we are able to, in these tough financial times that we're all very aware of with local councils, to actually be able to work with money that is allocated and to allow a team to actually flourish and do what they need to in terms of pavements, in terms of street lighting, in terms of roads and all of that. But to do it in a way that innovates on behalf of the climate and in working on that roadway towards net zero for 2030. The innovation, which I know that you all see in the graph on page 34, or for new school people, section 3.12, is an important part of the money that's allocated. And I get called out at various points, very willingly and very happily, to go see new slurry equipment, to go see new cold press activity, to see us purchasing electric vehicles, and to continually try to make that innovation on behalf of the climate. One of the reasons why this team won that award, I know that's the thing that put us over the end. So, you know, money well spent in providing residents an increasing level of what we want and deserve in terms of our infrastructure, but also to continue down that road towards properly dealing with the climate emergency. The other thing that I would just, that I would just like to say is that I think that this is, this is also a crew that manages the, manages the funds very, very well. And I know that things are, in many, in many instances prioritised through here, and there's a number of appendices, which I'm sure that everyone who's not going to do wardwork by calling out their favourite street tonight, will actually note and can take that away for a later conversation. But there's also other programmes that are backed up in order of priority, and I know that with the careful management, that actually I'm well aware and see that you do, that oftentimes we can achieve things that exceed beyond what you initially put out and think that you can achieve. So, I think it's, I think it's a real positive. I look forward to what the next year brings. I forgot to mention the bridges and the infrastructure, which I'm really excited to see us addressing. And obviously, that's very important, and I know that you're going to be working very hard on that. People don't really see it, may cause them more of an inconvenience to, you know, have to go around a bridge or something like that for a while, or deal with the riverside challenges that we've had along the Kenet, for example. But those are really, really essential innovations in our bridges and structures, too. So, all in all, a huge thank you, and I'd like to encourage members to go along with the recommendations, so set forth the force this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rowland. An indication from councillor Barnett Ward earlier.
Thank you, Chair. Very, very aware of councillor Rowland's prohibition on doing wardwork in this meeting. So, I'm going to, I want to ask Sam a question about appendix two. Sam, you, there might be a familiar road on here that you may wonder, that may recognise why I'm asking about appendix two, but I'm asking in very general terms, not in parochial terms. So, appendix two, which is the list now 2024 to 2026, some of this list was on an earlier list, which had an earlier end date. So, residents who live on roads on this list, who've been on the earlier list, may be concerned at seeing a 2026 end date, and they're ward councillors, they'd be a bit concerned. So, I wondered if you could speak to the prioritisation, because obviously heavily traffic roads are going to have a level of priority. But there may then be concerns where we have got residential roads that haven't been able to be covered in the residential road programme. At what point do they percolate up to the top of the list when they've already been waiting for a while? But I will also sugar that question by saying I do very appreciate, as a frequent pedestrian and cyclist, the lovely smooth roads that we've had coming out from this programme. And people sometimes look at road resurfacing as though it's purely a car thing, it's absolutely not. In fact, cyclists are more impacted by worn road surfaces than cars, so I appreciate that. But, yeah, so I didn't name a road.
Thank you, councillor Barnett Ward. Sam, you want to respond?
I certainly do. Thank you very much, councillor. First of all, councillor Rowland, you're going to get really excited, we've got some great innovation coming forward, and we can let you know about that later. Councillor Barnett Ward, you raise some very good points, actually. I think well over 700 roads have been completed now in this programme, and we've probably got less than a dozen that have been on that repeat list. There are reasons why they got, they haven't been completed, and they were usually, there's utility work doing, a utility company doing some work, or they would have, for example, been the wrong solution. So, it was put down for micro asphalt, and when we got to site, we thought, actually, this needs a more substantial repair, it may have deteriorated further. So, those were the main reasons why they got delayed, but they will be completed, because we've always said they will be done, and absolutely right, they do need to be completed. I mean, we're looking at over 80% of our residential unclassified roads in good condition, and we certainly want to improve that as much as we can going forward. And there will be another 105 roads, I think, to try and push that figure up any higher. Nothing will be left out, is what we want to tell our residents. And, yes, we have an annual survey, and we're moving from visual surveys that are completed, and we go into the video management system, where they are putting, the computer gets the information and provides the outcome, and we're into our second year of that already. So, we really are starting to see the benefits of using technology and innovation to reduce workload, but also to get it right, so that it's consistent, there isn't this human error. So, a lot of that will happen. So, prioritisation will come around the survey results. So, to be assured, just to let everybody know that, yes, our priority remains on a principal route, because they carry the most cars, and they have the highest risk for us. So, we use all of our DFT funding for that, but we have the luxury of having additional council fund of money, and that goes towards the residential roads. That gives us the capability to do roads that would normally not get in the programme. And this is where those residential roads, if your residents feel, my road is, why don't they do my road? That gives us this opportunity. So, they don't have to be the highest priority, but they do have to fall within the residential council funded. Saying that, the HS2 additional money will go towards, will support our major road so that we can get those in a better condition. They're in a fair condition, and the idea is we've got nearly 75 sections of road going out, which will significantly improve most of the ones that are in very bad condition at the moment. And so, the residents shouldn't be concerned about the prioritisation process, there is the funding for us to deal with all roads in the borough, and we don't have to worry that, because they're not the main roads, they won't be done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. I have councillor Yo, who I'd like to ask a question.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Sam, for, it's a really useful report for us. I've just got one question, and it's about the pavement side of it, which is also changed slightly based on your comments, which is, you mentioned about the additional funding, and I'm now wondering whether this fits with what I'm asking. So, in the second appendix on page 60, it's got about the 2425 pavements, and it says in the comments, reserved for future surfacing, and I wasn't sure what that meant in terms of scheduling, and whether that is subject to funding, for instance, because of what you said.
Yes, thank you, guys, and thanks for that. It probably is a legacy from right at the start of the programme, where we had a limited amount of funding. And with the pavements or the footpaths, the programme was to tackle those that are in most poor condition, where we've got a lot of cars parking on them, or they're in, particularly in the south of Reading, where you've got clay underneath, we get a lot of rutting and damage, and those had to be addressed. And that's why the programme's been slower than we would have liked. But we're starting to get ahead of those really bad ones now, and the idea is that we will be using different products. And I've spoken to you before, but we've done that trial down in Commercial Road, and councillor Rowland, remember, we use that advanced material. We're in discussion with MION, who've got the product, and they've just brought some more material from America, and we'll be rolling more of that out. So, the idea is to get, so that note on the thing is a legacy comment in the first three years, rather than reserve for future surfacing. It's on the programme, and the idea is we'll... So the idea is to get, so that, that note on the thing is a legacy comment in the first three years, rather than reserve a future of surface. It's on the program and, and the idea is we'll start accelerating the program with cheaper products that extend the life, seal, seal the pavement. And we don't have to reconstruct everywhere. At the moment, we're still finishing off the reconstruction areas so that those, those trip hazards are completely gone. We're also thickening and strengthening the footpaths because we know the vehicles will park on there. I can't stop them yet, but we do know that maybe that's coming in the future.
Thank you, Sam. I have councillor Eden.
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm going to risk councillor Rowland's displeasure and mention roads by name. The first thing I wanted to say, but to make a general point, is that a lot of residents who are interested in this issue are concerned when, you know, for initial resurfacing takes place and it's not up to standard, for whatever reason, often it's to do with the weather. And I just wanted to say that I found it very reassuring being able to let my residents know that, that rectification work is at no cost to the council when that occurs. Because I think that is one of the questions that residents always want to know because they want to know that the money is being spent wisely. So I think that's something which was worth, is worth highlighting publicly because it does come up quite a bit. For me, residents in Whitley are very cost conscious and very civic minded in that way. The other thing that I think actually picks up slightly on a point you made in answer to councillor Yo around footpaths, particularly in the south of Reading, is I think what's really nice is when we're able to combine improved amenity and tackling climate emergency. And certainly in my ward, we've been very appreciative of a way of tackling verge parking, which is something that many residents across town find irritating, although of course it's often done by other residents. And that is by using trees, mature trees to plant. And that's really something we're really looking forward to in Spencer's Road in particular. But it's something which I think across town is of real benefit. Because obviously it improves the amenity for residents, tackles the climate emergency, and it's a very good way of making it physically impossible to chew up the verge by driving onto it. So these are really nice examples of using this investment to get multiple wins.
Thank you councillor Eden. Do you want to respond to that, Sam?
I would love to. Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you councillor. You raise some excellent points. I mean, yes, when a road fails from surfacing, the remedials. We do know that in the end of, end of last, last calendar year, our contractor was laying material in pouring rain and they have failed and they will come back and they will repair them. It's a pity because it puts us in a bad light that those four or five roads have damaged. And I know which ones that you're probably thinking of in South Reading. And it's disappointing, but they will be coming back. In fact, we have a meeting with them next week and we're going to be trying to get a date out of them to come back and get it done at their own cost. So that will happen. There is also, the micro asphalt does create concern for the residents when it first gets laid. It looks very rough and ready, but it does settle. The volatiles can take up to six months to come out of it. But those roads are pot all free and the numbers are down. So, so it does, does improve. And the climate emergency, yes, I think, I mean, we're funding hundreds of trees for our parks department to plant. And I think I funded two hundred and fifteen and, and they are racing around trying to find suitable places. So grass verges are brilliant. In future years, the more challenging going into those residential streets, which are got no grass verges. And we've got lots of services and trying to get them into those areas to provide the canopy travel, canopy cover, canopy cover will, will be our challenge, but it's not something we're going to shy away from. So yes, it is, we fully intend to keep that program going.
Thank you, Sam. I don't have any more indications from any other councillors. Okay then, so we can note this report and we can move on to the next item. Thank you very much, Sam, for your presentation. Okay, next item is the new Reading Central Library and Donna will present. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So this is an update on the progress of the new Reading Central Library following our successful leveling up fund bid. It provides information on the planned improved book stock provision, in particular the increases in shelving for children's, teens and non-English stock. It also provides information on the progress to withdraw and dispose of stock that is no longer required in line with our withdrawals policy. And we're asking the committee to endorse the approach to stock provision, to note the planned work in relation to stock management and withdrawals and to delegate, this isn't director of culture, in consultation with lead member, to agree the closure period to facilitate the move of central library to the civic centre. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Adele, would you?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, it's really exciting to be bringing this report forward. This is about the stock control element of the library move. And it's an opportunity to look at what people value in our libraries and what they're using. The members may or may not know that the existing central library was built as the Berkshire County Library. And of course, it was built before people were using laptops in libraries, before they became workspaces. So it was designed for a very different use. It's been underused for some time. And because of that, we've not had to do the sort of stringent stock control that we do in our more tightly used libraries. So if you go into Caversham, Palmer Park, any of our smaller busy libraries, every inch of shelf space there is holding books that we know people want to borrow. We haven't had to do that in central library because we've had loads of extra shelf space because the library is too big for what we need or the layout is not what we need. So what we've been able to do is to really assess what people want out of the library. We've consulted widely with the public and to think about what our flagship library should be. And we've kept the things that are really important, the local, in the local history, the stuff that's specific about Reading. We're putting in workspaces that people can bring in a laptop, you can plug in, you can, I mean, you, really, there are very few places in the current central where you can actually sit comfortably and work on a laptop, which seems mad when you think about how people use libraries now, but it was built and designed in the nineteen eighties. We are increasing, as members will see, I won't go through all of it, but at two point five, we've got what we're, the book stock that we are increasing, the things that people use. I'm so excited about the new children's library. It's going to be amazing. And I'm excited about the whole project because I have, members on this side of the chamber will know, I have an obsession with trying to get people to engage with what the council does in a positive way and community engagement. And for this building, not just to be somewhere people come when things have gone wrong, which for some people it is. And to have a thriving library in our civic centre, welcoming, putting on fantastic events is going to be wonderful. And we're going to get so many more people in this building than we usually have. And who knows, some of them might come down the corridor and come and watch a council meeting. It would be lovely. So yes, I'm really pleased to see this. We will be updating the committee on other things to do with the move in due course. But this report is just asking for the committee's approval of the recommended actions about stock control that are there on the first page of the report, which is page sixty seven of the pack. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Barnet Ward. Councillor Rowland.
Thank you. I, I just would like to express my appreciation for the proposals and, and how responsive the, the work around the stock with the, with the books has been. And to note very positively, the, the, the new levels of, of increases actually for some of the areas that, that are so important for library users. The, the children's library, as councillor Barnett Ward mentioned, I know is going to be really, really exciting. The teen zone is, is absolutely fabulous. And so I think there's so many positives and, and also the, the spoken word, the large print items. And there's so many positives about, about how officers have really thought this through, that I think that it's, I, you know, I'm, I'm just really, I'm really pleased about it. I, I know that, that before, when I was the lead member for culture, I really took a steep learning curve in terms of what libraries are, what libraries can be and what they are now and what we have in our minds, you know, from old, olden times, I guess. You know, you have a kid draw like the picture of a house and it's usually got the little A and the little door and the little windows and all that. And you draw a library in your mind, you know, it's got books and it's just, you know, that, that kind of mentality. But they are so much more. And so you've, you've innovated, you've got your stock under control. And where you're changing that, you're, you're bringing a library that's, that's really fit for the future and, and has the right stock for the right groups and everything. So I just really wanted to commend officers and my colleague and everyone that's worked to, to, I think, get this right. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Rowland. Councillor Kitchellam.
Hello. I'm also very excited by this new library that sounds that it's going to be excellent. I had a question about, wondering if you could give a little bit more detail about reserve fiction? Because as you note on page seventy six of the report, it is an important part of a library's role. Because it gives free access to older and out of print works. But your proposals just say basically some will be kept and some will be disposed of. And I wondered if we could have a bit more detail. Thank you.
So at the moment, as you can imagine, with all of the bits of stock that we've got in the building, it is a very long process that the team are working through. And they're working through against the criteria that was set out in the withdrawals policy that we brought to this committee in March twenty twenty three. So that's the criteria upon which we will be working out what stock we retain and which stock we will look to withdraw.
Thank you. I see no further indications. We need to make a decision on this one. So everyone happy with the recommended actions? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Let's move on to item nine. Discretionary licensing in private rented housing. I think Stuart Taylor and Catherine Lewis to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Stuart Taylor, Principal Environmental Health Officer in the Regulate, in the private sector housing team. And I'm joined by Catherine Lewis, the group manager. The report presented provides the committee with evidence and justification of the potential to utilize discretionary licensing tools to improve housing conditions and management in the private rented sector. The council commissioned a stock condition report, which found that nearly forty percent of housing stock in Reading is in the private rented sector. And of that, there are over three thousand houses in multiple occupation or HMOs. The report predicts that thirty seven percent of HMOs are likely to have a serious hazard and that there were significant levels of predicted hazards in other rented properties, but particularly in some areas of the borough. The corporate plan and the housing strategy commit the council to review evidence in relation to housing conditions and to review the need for discretionary licensing schemes as part of wider actions to improve the quality and safety of housing for residents. And the health and wellbeing strategy also identifies that poor housing is one of the determinants of poor health. And the strategy commits the council to consider the impact on health and to address the variation in the experience of the wider social, economic and environmental determinants of health. Poor and unsafe housing can occur in all forms of home ownership and occupancy. But in general, the private rented sector has the highest rates of poorer housing. A growing proportion of the population now live in privately rented properties and there's a clear link between healthy homes and health inequalities. The report recommends that the committee authorizes commencement of a statutory consultation exercise with residents, private landlords, businesses and other key stakeholders on proposals for the implementation of a borough-wide additional HMO licensing scheme and phased introduction of a selective licensing scheme. The council currently licenses over one thousand four hundred properties under the national mandatory licensing scheme, which is for larger houses in multiple occupation and those are the ones with five or more occupants. An additional HMO licensing scheme will cover smaller HMOs that are currently outside that national scheme. This scheme designation could also include certain buildings converted into self-contained flats. Evidence suggests that a significant proportion of the HMOs are likely to give rise to problems either for the people occupying them or for members of the wider public, but in particular around serious hazards such as damp and mold. A borough-wide scheme for smaller HMOs is proposed with the aim of improving conditions in these properties. A selective licensing scheme would mean that all private landlords in this designated area must have a license. This includes flats and houses rented to single occupants and families. Selective licensing also aims to improve the private rented market and to ensure homes are of a decent standard for a landlord to rent out. Selective licensing also gives tenants confidence that houses and flats in the designated area will be healthy and safe to live in. Evidence from the survey has led officers to recommend a consultation into a selective license scheme designation covering three wards, Battle Park and Redlands. These wards have been selected based on predicted numbers and rates of serious hazards in rented properties in those areas. The introduction of discretionary licensing allows the council to inspect, to limit occupation, to apply conditions and in certain circumstances, take control of properties. The Act, the Housing Act sets the criteria for the council to consider suitability of the property, management arrangements and determine whether the landlord is a fit and proper person to manage the property in question. The council can charge for a license with licenses generally being issued for up to five years. And the license costs are based on cost recovery of the scheme designations. The overall aim of the schemes is to improve property conditions in the private rented sector and achieve better health outcomes for residents through these improvements. And the recommendations listed in the reports are firstly, that the council, that the committee notes the evidence in the report from the stock condition report, highlighting the scale of poor housing conditions, deprivation, antisocial behaviour and other issues linked to the private rented sector in Reading. Secondly, to authorize the director of economic growth and enabled services to commence this statutory consultation exercise with residents, private landlords, businesses and other key stakeholders on proposals for a borough-wide additional licensing and phased introduction of a selective licensing scheme. And to propose areas to be included in the consultation on those designations based on evidence provided by the stock condition report. Thirdly, to note the initial report findings in Battle, excuse me, Battle Park and Redlands wards based on the evidence provided in the report. And fourthly, to note that a further report with the outcome of the consultation would follow, setting out recommendations as to whether to designate additional and or selective licensing schemes and their scope and scale. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank the presentation. And councillor Imberson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So without saying thanking officers, because a huge amount of work has gone into this, as you'll probably see, having read the report, all the detail, especially of the stock condition report. And thanks officers for comprehensively summing up tonight because it is confusing the way in which the licensing canon might operate. You know, I think the private sector is really important in Reading, you know, forty percent of our residents live in the private sector. We all get housing casework from those that are struggling with a housing situation. And the fact of the matter is, private sector is broken in this country and in Reading, rent is extortionate and we want good landlords. We want high quality accommodation across the town. And this will help with that kind of what we're doing. And, you know, some local authorities have different licensing already in place. And we've done a lot of work in looking at what might work in Reading and looked at the numbers because these schemes are difficult and costly to implement and you have to do it properly. And the team already worked tirelessly in terms of enforcement. So it's really important that this is looked at properly. And I think it's right that, of course, we have this consultation and then it will track back and we can look at what comes out of that. and we can look at what comes out of that and then get more into the detail of where the schemes might go in terms of what is appropriate and what can be managed in the kind of, in terms of how we look at what wards might be appropriate and whatnot. But the report is very clear in terms of the facts associated with what officers are thinking at the moment. So, you know, naturally, we might all want schemes in our own wards, but that's not the right thing. And it's right that we look at the data and holistically across the town as to what matters. So keen to hear what others say Chair and hopefully I'm sure everyone will welcome this report and thank the officers for their hard work.
Thank you very much councillor Emberson. I have councillor Rowland.
Down to one mic tonight between us. Yes, I would just like to commend officers' work on this and for producing a very comprehensive stock condition report, which for someone like myself that lives in a heavy HMO area, was extremely interested in. And I've been referring to it recently just to read up on it. It's really very interesting and I think that I'm very thankful to officers for that. But I also am very proud of the fact that we have finally really sat down there and said, this is what we're looking at. This is a way, although as councillor Emberson alluded to, it could be seen to be a bit confusing or whatever, but this is a pathway towards Reading Borough Council taking charge of and ensuring that our private sector rental housing is up to par. I say that as a renter myself and living in an area with a lot of rentals. HMOs are a viable and realistic option for many people in this town. And they serve a very valuable service as part of the makeup of our, you know, the places that people choose to live in. However, HMOs should never be a place where people suffer, where people are not living in a place that is safe, in a place that is not perhaps rife with ASB on other floors or in other areas or, you know, of the house, things like that, because that leads to a poor health outcome for every resident if they're living in those conditions. And I'm very, very pleased that we're looking at ways to tackle that. So I really am eager to see what the consultation will bring forward. I think that that is an excellent way of going about it, that we can get that feedback and understand where the real issues are and how we can logically tackle it. There are resourcing implications and those are something that we have to consider. And I know that councillor Emberson's been very conscious of that, as we all have. But we do know that something has to be done. And I just want to applaud and thank officers and councillor Emberson for bringing this forward. It's the right thing to do for forty percent of the population in this town that rents. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Rowland. Councillor Cresswell.
Thank you. Thanks for this. It's much needed, very welcome, very well presented. I have a question about the designation of the areas, which is described as wards or groups of wards. My question is, are we tied to ward boundaries or if in terms of housing stock, a similar area that overlaps a bit, misses a bit from one ward, you know, that kind of thing would be an option. Can we vary from ward boundaries or are we kind of tied for some reason to electoral ward boundaries?
So obviously the information provided in the stock condition report was presented at ward level. When we make the designation, it will be down to the council to determine what the boundary of the areas is. And I imagine that the areas will form part of the consultation exercise as well. So I imagine that we will get feedback from all sorts of interested parties on the areas and whether adjacent areas or different areas should be included. Obviously, there are difficulties in setting boundaries, in trying to work out where they should be, you know. Is it one street? Is it two streets? Is it three streets further? So wards have been presented in the recommendation as they are an existing identifiable area, which certainly helps with the consultation and probably with the implementation as well. But that will certainly form part of the consultation feedback process.
Is that okay councillor Cresswell?
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Cool. Okay. Councillor Hacker.
Thank you Chair. First of all, I welcome Battle Wall being looked at. We do have a high incidence of HMOs. And basically, I believe strongly that everyone deserves to live in a safe and warm and dry home. I was in a meeting on Monday with Connect Reading, talking about the cost of living crisis in the town with various other charities. And it came to the conclusion that we are facing a perfect storm. So not only do we have the cost of living crisis, if we look to the detail of that, we have an energy crisis, people can't afford to heat their homes. We have a climate crisis. We, over this winter, experienced very severe wet weather. On top of this, wages aren't keeping up with food prices. People are finding they have less and less money in which to modify their homes, keep them dry, keep them warm. So if we can do something as a council, this is wonderful. But one thing did come out of this meeting and this is something that I'd like us all to consider. As part of the cost of living crisis, we also have seen increases in interest rates, mortgages being less favourable, buy-to-let mortgages being less favourable. And one of the charities there raised a very serious concern is that landlords are just leaving the market. They can't afford to keep their properties up and any requests in which to raise standards, they go, no, not spending that money, can't afford to do it, I'm going to sell up. And we lose that valuable rented property from the market. Reading does have a very, very severe situation where people simply cannot afford to rent. You don't even have to be on Facebook, local Facebook gossip girl groups for a day and you will see multiple people saying, how am I supposed to afford somewhere to live? We simply cannot afford these rents anymore. So I am concerned this will be a very delicate balance between, quite rightly so, raising standards of rented properties. But on the other hand, will we see these rented properties leave the market? Meaning that they may then go into private ownership, which people are finding more and more unaffordable. So I'm not sure we can answer that question today and I'd be really interested to see the results of the consultation when they come back. But I just think it's something we need to bear in mind. I wish it wasn't this way. I wish people wouldn't put profit before people. But sadly, that is the case and sometimes a necessity.
Thank you councillor Hacker. Was there a question there?
I don't think we can answer it today.
Okay.
I think it's a question for us all to consider during the consultation. What impact will these changes make and will people see rented properties leave the market? I don't know. I'd just be interested if anyone had any thoughts at the moment.
Any thoughts?
I mean, it's something that we are obviously conscious of ourselves. I know that there are, I mean, other councils have obviously successfully implemented schemes and we will be closely looking at what's been success there and what maybe they've had difficulties with as part of our sort of process of moving this forward. So it has been something we've discussed as officers in the team already. So, but yeah, it will hopefully be part of the consultation and we'll definitely be looking.
Councillor Connell.
Thank you. Personally, my gut feeling is if you can't afford to keep the property that you're renting in a habitable state, then you shouldn't be a landlord. And if that means selling up, then sell up and let somebody else have a go at keeping the property in a habitable state. But what I like about this idea coming forward, and there is a lot to digest, and I'm not for a moment suggesting that I've digested it yet, but I look forward to the consultation to do that. I like about it the idea that people renting, as the councillor said, is it forty percent of Reading renting? Being able to get some kind of redress without fear of sort of retaliation. If we make these kind of things official, everybody knows where they stand. You sign up for it. If you're a landlord, you've signed up for it. If you're a renter, you've signed up for it. Everybody knows where they stand. So when mould starts coming up, they don't have to feel fear at reporting that mould, you know, because they can see what the standards are and I want that for our renters. My question kind of ties in with councillor Cresswell's question about ward boundaries. Because I know for an example, up in Tarhurst, we don't have many HMOs. But where we do have HMOs, they tend to be in a small concentrated area. So ward wise, if we're taking it on how many issues there are in a ward, you're not going to get many in some wards because they don't have many properties. But where they do have HMOs, they're a sort of cluster that perhaps do need to be sort of taken separately from the rest of the ward. I suppose my question is, will we be, whatever we put in place, how easy will it be to get new areas put onto the lists as demographics change, as the, you know, our towns continuously evolving and, you know, new areas might become popular for landlords to convert into HMOs over time. Would we be able to bring these back, get them added to the list if we only initially start with three or four wards on it? What kind of processes will we put in place for reviewing? And if there's a problem in a small area, but it doesn't have a red light flashing over it as ward wide, could we still perhaps be able to do something about those smaller areas?
Okay.
We've been attempting to answer that. So in relation to your first point about, well, on houses in multiple occupation in particular. So the recommendation in the report is that all houses in multiple occupation borough-wide require a licence, because that's the additional HMO licensing scheme. So the recommendation is for doing that across all wards. So obviously that would include Tarhurst. In terms of adding more properties on, well, the recommendation as it is, is based on what we think is achievable in terms of the volume of applications that we might get from the schemes. And you'll note in the recommendations, we've suggested phasing the discretionary licensing scheme to help us achieve that. And there will need to be reviews as the scheme goes on to see how many applications we're getting in, whether we can achieve any further with that. But the proposal as it is at the moment is officers' recommendation on the scale that we think is achievable with the likely resources.
Thank you Stuart. Councillor Emberson.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I just wanted to kind of come back on councillor Hacker's point, because I think it's a fair point. And, you know, at a time where we see so many people struggling with homelessness, we don't want to shake the private sector too much because it is, you know, inevitable that that's where some people want to be housed and that's what they can afford. And, you know, but this is the right thing to do. And I think there is a balance to be had. But I think what landlords, from their perspective, what they want is clarity and clear communication. And when schemes like this are implemented, it's important they're put in place properly. You know, the yo-yoing of this Conservative government on the energy and the environmental policies, that's what is freaking landlords out because they don't know what is expected of them. So I think, you know, a scheme like this isn't going to deter them from the market entirely. And those that are getting into the HMO business and, you know, getting finance for HMOs should be pretty robust landlords that know what they're doing. So I think, you know, that balance is crucial and I'm grateful that councillor Hacker mentioned it. But I think as long as the scheme is executed properly and properly put in place and clearly communicated on the website, I don't foresee it being any issue.
Thank you councillor Emberson. I don't see, ah, James.
Thank you Chair. Sorry hiding at the back here. Just to contextual point on that and to sort of pick up on councillor Hacker's question and councillor Emberson's additional response on that. So if we look back to the original, or the last house condition survey that we did, which was back in twenty thirteen, we were talking about roughly two and a half thousand HMOs in the borough. Subsequently, there was a mandatory HMO licensing scheme implemented. And one of the worries at that time was the impact on HMOs. We were going to see a loss of HMOs and a valuable source of accommodation. That didn't materialise. And as we can see from the report, that's grown to about three thousand. So it's a fairly stable number despite the additional regulation. I think the sort of challenge at the time and we were concerned around, and what we're seeing in the market currently is buy-to-let landlords and or those who own a single HMO investment, looking to kind of get rid of those because it's not something that they see as a sustainable option for them. And it's portfolio landlords therefore that are picking up those properties. So they're not tending to go back into family home usage, which is disappointing in some areas. But, you know, they are tending to remain in the market in the same, you know, same use. So I think whilst I completely understand and I think, you know, there will be some landlords who will get out of the business as a result of increased regulation, you know, it does feel as if we've got a fairly static environment for those sorts of properties because the demands there and portfolio landlords who are more professional and can therefore manage those properties better are likely to pick up those properties. So I can't see us having a significant loss. But that's, you know, that's more of a guess than anything. But as I say, the evidence suggests from twenty thirteen to the most recent survey that we haven't lost HMOs, we've actually grown them, but it hasn't grown, you know, exponentially. Thanks Chair.
Thank you James for that useful information there. Okay, so we can go to the recommended actions. Everyone agree the recommended actions? Yeah, we have a unanimous agreement. Thank you very much. And we have no other items to discuss tonight. So I declare this meeting closed. Thank you.
Good night everybody.